Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Farmington Hills City Council for August 15, 2022. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Council members Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
Newland?
Here.
Next item is approval of the regularly scheduled meeting agenda for tonight. Is there any discussion? Dr. Bruce?
Mayor, I approve the approval of the agenda as published.
For?
It's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Dr. Massey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is item number two, a 10-minute rushed meeting with the Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Committee report. This is the first official meeting in front of council of this wonderful commission, and up to speak right now is a former council member but delightful human being, Matthew Strickfaden.
Well, thank you, Mayor Barnett. Councilmember, City Manager Gary Mechon, Assistant City Manager Joe Valentine, by the way, who was incredibly helpful, and thank you for the opportunity to present the first of many ideas our committee is developing and will share over the next two years. My name is Matthew Strickfaden, Chair Member of the IEESC, which stands for Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Committee. The IEESC was tasked by the mayor and city council to research innovative programs along with ways to fund them. We were asked to look at new-fangled, that comes right from your quote, Mayor Barnett, things that Farmington and Farmington Hills can do in terms of smart growth, smart city services, electric and autonomous vehicle movement of people and supplies, irresistible art displays, along with any other ideas limited only by our imagination and ability to look into the future. This all-encompassing mandate is one our committee is both committed to and excited by, the opportunity to revitalize our community, draw more people in, and improve the quality of life for all our residents. The ideas we will be presenting tonight are just the first ideas we plan on sharing with city council during the next two years. We all submitted our ideas and decided on which were to be developed first using a ranked choice voting average. Now, remember that there were 15 other ideas that were initially submitted, and we plan on researching and potentially developing some or all of these ideas along with dozens of other ideas we will ultimately develop as we meet every month and assess the needs and interests of our community. It's with great pleasure that I introduce our committee members. Please stand as I call your name. Nicholas DeWitt, Secretary. Aaron Paluzzi, who I don't think is here yet. Mark Zechos. John Aldred. Erin Quatell. Nick Rudowski. And Jennifer Whitaker. Committee Member David Richardson is unable to attend the meeting tonight. So I'd like to start the presentation with Farmington resident Nick Rudowski, who will speak about the importance of our joint Farmington-Farmington Hills approach, the IEESC, and will introduce Nicholas DeWitt, who will present our community garden initiative, and then introduce Erin Quatell, who will discuss our policies and ordinances, ordinance initiatives, solar panels at the Hock, and give an EV charging station update. I'll give a brief closing statement and ask for your questions then. May I present Farmington resident Nicholas Rudowski?
Well, thank you and good evening. As just stated, my name is Nick Rudowski, and as a City of Farmington resident and committee member on this initiative, I just want to extend our appreciation for being included on this initiative. We definitely considered the applicability of the City of Farmington into these initiatives as well, and look forward to presenting at our own subsequent council meeting. We appreciate the continued partnership and success of our cities, and would like to now call forward Nicholas DeWitt to present the initial findings of our report.
So our first proposal was for community gardens. The goal of our community garden proposal is to create a greener Farmington Hills, providing residents with the green space for agricultural utilization. We estimate the cost to range between $20,000 and $40,000. This is based on past community garden efforts. This is dependent on the success of fundraising efforts and materials used in the construction. The expected timeline is a multi-year plan with the final designs being completed in 2023 and installation complete in the spring of 2024. The vision of the community garden project includes the installation of one garden within the vicinity of the William Grace Dog Park. There will be approximately 30 garden beds. Two plots will be dedicated for educational programs out of the nature center. The gardens will have access to a water supply and be surrounded by a fencing gate. The gardens will incorporate environmentally friendly methods and materials in the construction. There will be an annual reservation fee to reserve a plot at the community garden with discounted rates for Farmington and Farmington Hills residents. Past garden efforts include the mayor's youth council garden located at the Caustic Center and the Farmington Cares Garden on Chiwasi Road. Both are currently discontinued. We have been very thoughtful about incorporating an educational aspect and making sure that the gardens are embraced by the community to ensure a successful program. We've listed a few on the slide. These include annual volunteer days hosted by Heritage Park, inclusion of plots, and the Farmington Hills Activities Guide as well. As you can see on the slides, we have a few concept art pictures as well as locations, the proposed location for our community garden next to the William Grace Dog Park. It's also across the parking lot from our annual community compost drop-off site, so it is easily accessible to the gardens. This is another slide that shows our inspiration and our vision for the community garden as The final piece to this proposal is the creation of a Farmington Hills Community Garden Guide. This is meant to be a how-to handbook focusing on the details of how to install your own community garden. This initiative aims to provide homeowners associations, neighborhoods, individuals, multifamily housing complexes with a guide on how to implement community gardens into their own open spaces. I will now hand the microphone over to Erin Quatell.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Erin Quatell. I am a Farmington Hills resident and also the Chief Environmental Sustainability Officer for Oakland County, so thank you for having me. Admittedly, this was not supposed to be my section, so I have a few notes that I will reference for this, but this proposal is to install a solar panel system on the newly renovated Hock. The goal is to use it as a demo project to exemplify how to use solar and to show folks the capabilities and everything about it. The proposal is for 20 panels, which is roughly 7 kilowatt-hours and would be the capacity to pair nicely with a battery that would be the size of a conventional house battery if you had one at your home. The cool thing about this, too, is that there's an integrative and interactive panel that you can have to actually see how the energy is flowing throughout the day, throughout different times of the year, and the idea would be to have this in a centrally-located area at the Hock as an education tool. The rough cost of this would be about $50,000 according to some of the architecture designs that have been done in the community, the surrounding community, the regional community, and could also be incorporated with other types of energy efficiency and energy programs. The next thing I'll talk about really quick is our next proposal for options is a city ordinance and policy audit. And what this is, is to evaluate and establish a baseline of sustainability practices, so really taking an internal look at Farmington Hills' policies and practices to see what are we doing well and where are the opportunities. The good thing is that this can be incorporated into the existing master land use planning process and other internal processes, so there's no external cost for it. And then a rough timeline for that would be six months to a year for the first review and audit of the actual policies and ordinances, and then the adoption after that being in year two. On this slide, you'll just see some examples of what that could be. So Farmington Hills staff would review them and then go through a variety of different types of criteria. This is not an exhaustive list, but it just shows an opportunity in what you would think about when you're looking at that audit. For example, if you're looking at the ordinances, you could look at energy. Is our zoning ordinance amenable to renewable energy sources for different types of development or single-family housing or multifamily housing and so forth? And then for a policy audit, for example, you could look at, how does Farmington Hills have a greenhouse gas inventory? What does that look like? How are we tracking that? How are we tracking the information for our facilities and buildings? And then just a quick example of that, you can see some case studies on the slide here. I just pulled out one for the Detroit Green Policy Case Studies and looked at, for example, updates to the lead ordinance, looking at green infrastructure, water, and things like Finally, I will also talk about electric vehicle infrastructure. So EVs came very highly on our list, but because of all of the recent federal requirements and federal funding, we decided to maybe take a pause from doing a recommendation for this and acknowledge everything that's happening in the region. So for this, the idea would be certainly to understand the electric vehicle infrastructure for Farmington Hills and the surrounding region, but there are a few things happening right now. We know that a lot of our automakers are progressing forward with EVs and know that there will be a need. I think there was a statistic somewhere that Farmington Hills is one of the greatest communities in Oakland County to have registered EV drivers, but the least amount of EV infrastructure. So it is very important, and we do need to consider it as a community, but there's a lot of things happening in the region. So let me see, just going to advance really quick. This is some of the stuff that's already started in the region. For example, there's a really great SEMCOG, which is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments' tool for EVs. They call it the EV hub or the EV resource kit. And on there, it has model ordinances from communities in the area, also talks about funding in great length. And what we're doing as a region, in Oakland County as part of it, is looking at a regional EV study in partnership with the Detroit Regional Partnership, which is a partnership between Macomb, Wayne, and Oakland County. And so, in short, there's a lot going on in EVs, and so the recommendation is to kind of hold tight, see what's happening for the region, and see how we can advance EV deployment throughout Farmington Hills. So that was very quick. I get accused of talking very fast as well, so if you have any questions or comments now would be the time, and I just really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Michael?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. With DT being here as well, do you have any idea of how many vehicles in Farmington Hills? I know you have people that work so at different office complexes in our community, but looking at residents with electric vehicle, do you have any idea what number that is in regards to that, or in also regards to the transient population that comes to Farmington Hills? I mean, do you want to look at the need and demand for EVs from that perspective?
That is such a good question. I don't have the answer to that, but I could absolutely find that out for you.
It'd be terrific to find that out because that'd help guide us in regards to policy. We need to do things to expedite installation of those through ordinance changes or looking out for research dollars that could be helpful as well.
I will add that there is a, so a little bit more on the federal funding for that. So it's affectionately known as NEVI. It's the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, I think, through the infrastructure bill, and that has a variety of different requirements. One of the things that you may have seen at the state level is the approval of our alternative fuel corridors. What those are, every single state was required to submit their EV plan, and it's based on those alternative fuel corridors, which essentially are our major right-of-ways, such as our interstates. And so in the state of Michigan, those are all of our current alternative fuel corridors, and the current requirements for that NEVI plan or the requirements for electric vehicle deployment is that the fast chargers, which are kind of like the super-fast, more like a conventional gas station chargers, would be deployed at least, I think it's one-mile radius from that alternative fuel corridor and be spaced every 50 miles along that corridor. So that gives you a little bit of reference in kind of that infrastructure deployment in the early stages, and then what it looks like internally at the local level, which is what we're doing through the Detroit Regional Partnership to identify just that, where do we need these other charging stations? How does that infrastructure integrate with our grid that we currently have?
Yeah. This is a question that we probably met as well, in regards to, the city has a goal to be part of the Smart Cities Initiative, and what, do you have any plans in place or things you're working on to help the city achieve that particular status of smart cities, part of your projects going down the road here?
That is a great question. Matt, do you want to come up and talk more about smart cities?
I think I touch base on that on my closing statement, which is, first and foremost, thank you, Mayor Barnett and City Council, for establishing this committee. I'm really proud to serve on it, so thank you very much. So today's presentation is not the end, rather, just the beginning. With these hard-working, creative, and talented committee members and the broad base of training, knowledge, and experience, I believe we will develop wide-ranging and comprehensive ideas for council's consideration. We will look at recycle, reuse, restore innovations, extraordinary dynamic art displays, projection mapping, autonomous vehicle expansion, smart cities, smart travel, that will go together with our new broadband initiative, and so many other creative ideas. So it's an ongoing process that we expect to do, and certainly that is on our radar. Our ideas will be limited only by our imagination and willingness to explore and reimagine our city's future through innovation. And with that said, if there's any other questions you have for any members, we'd love to hear them.
Vale, then Ken.
Thanks. I have two questions. Well, one's more of a comment. So I actually serve on a committee with Aaron. We're both on the Oakland County Mobility Task Force, Committee Task Force, I'm not sure which one it is, but it consists of a variety of different automotive companies as well as suppliers in Oakland County, as well as public transit, and I hope I'm not missing anyone, and then obviously Oakland County and some municipal representation. But one of the things this committee or task force is going to be looking at is EV infrastructure. We all know that for it to be successful, it has to be coordinated. You just can't start plopping a charger here and one here and one here. I mean, it needs to be a coordinated effort, and that means not just looking at the interstates, but looking at home chargers. Then you also have public chargers, whether it be at like gas station-type facilities or retail or work. I mean, it's got to be really coordinated amongst the different types of chargers and locations to really make the effort work. So this task force recently sent out a survey to all of the different CVTs, the cities, township, villages in Oakland County, and they are waiting for them, they're in the process of being returned. I don't know if we have received, I'm sure we've received it, hopefully we've returned it. If that doesn't ring a bell, Mr. City Manager, can we please reach out to Oakland County and make sure that we get a copy of that survey? It's critical that we fill it out, and they really want all of the municipalities' feedback. Basically, the survey is trying to find out how familiar city governments are with EV charging infrastructure, what kind of knowledge they already have, what interests they have, because one of the other things that we just talked about, we just had a meeting this week, is the need also for municipalities to coordinate with the county, but also different, maybe like there's a southeast section of Oakland County that works together, or a southwest section of Oakland County, to really have better opportunities for funding, but also to keep, you know, maybe you can even go out and RFPs and have a consortium together, kind of like how we work with recycling and garbage pickup, just to help reduce the costs. So there's a lot of different ideas out there, is what I'm saying. So I just wanted to make sure we get that survey turned in and let the rest of the council members know about that and know that Oakland County is looking into this as well, and hopefully we can all coordinate and work together. So thank you for bringing that up. The other question I had was on the community garden. I absolutely love the idea. I think it's awesome. I'm just curious. So the City of Farmington used to have a community garden right off of there on Farmington Road by where the Dunkin' Donuts is. It was there for many years, and then I think they were doing construction, road construction down there several years ago, and so they weren't able to put in the community garden. And I'm not sure, it doesn't look like it's back there. Do you, I'm just curious what happened to that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the community garden that was on Farmington Road.
Off of Farmington.
Off of Farmington.
It was on one of the side streets, right there where the Dunkin' Donuts is.
Yeah.
South, just north of Eight Mile.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any further details on that particular community garden.
Was it with Flanders? No, it wasn't, no, literally, it was on that street just north of Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
Across from Steinkoff Garden, that area right there. And it was very successful when it was in operation, and like I said, then they had some road construction, so they weren't able to do it for a year or two, and I don't know, I'm not sure if it ever took off again after that. But it might be interesting to, since this is a joint committee with Farmington and Farmington Hills, to look into that and see what happened with that community garden. Because we just, we want to, as a coordinated, community-coordinated committee, does it make sense to bring that one back and have two or just one and invite Farmington residents to participate in this one as well?
Yeah, I definitely see us looking into that. We also did explore a lot of the community gardens in the surrounding cities, such as West Bloomsfield's Kerner Farms, Northville's Thatcher's Corner, and as well as Greenmead. And we called and I visited. They all have overwhelming support, and they are booked out yearly. I know that in Livonia, they have a multi-year waiting list for a plot, so the demand is definitely there. The reason we picked the William Grace Dog Park location is conveniently next to our annual compost drop-off as well as the surrounding community in the area. It has the infrastructure for parking lots, easy access, and water supply, but we are definitely open to looking into that community garden.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that that be the location. I'm great with the Farmington Hills location, but I'm just saying they have some, there were a lot of volunteers that were a part of that program and have a lot of knowledge on community gardens, so it might be nice to reach out to them and ball them since this is a joint committee.
I agree. We'll definitely do that.
Thanks. Love it.
Dr. Massey?
Thank you. While you're up, I'm going to make a comment on your community garden concept. And several of us, I know Mr. Bridges, I know Dr. Bruce, Ms. Noel, I think you were also on council. We had in front of us some land that was owned by the city just east of where the William Grace is on Rennislar, and one, there were two lots for homes, and one of those lots was sold to a group called Life Remodeled. They built a house there. The lot, which is an entire full-size lot, next door to that, to the north of it, as I recall, was allocated or slated to become a community garden. Mr. City Manager, do you know if it's still there? Because that, we already own it, and that was what the...
Three lots there.
There are three lots there?
There's three lots there.
And so it's not far from the compost issue and so forth, but there's a big opportunity that we had already allocated that, for this particular purpose, but it never sort of emerged and know what the energy behind it perhaps. I bring it up because those are larger areas, which would allow more people to participate. I'm glad you brought up the one that cares, and I like what Ms. Noel is saying about Farmington. So that's an interesting idea, and on the EV charging stations, while all of this needs to be coordinated, an issue, it was just brought up at our Economic Development Corporation meeting, that General Motors is actually giving a certain number of charging stations to its dealerships to work within the communities that they're located with to determine where best to place those. So I don't want to overlook some freebies that could be placed, so Mr. Slaughter from Bob Sellers was the one that brought that to our attention. So I would assume that there are other similar programs going on, but let's not overlook the free ones that are being handed to us.
Yeah, that's great. If you have more information about that, we'll gladly take that.
Yeah, as more information comes forth, but he was saying they're being allocated based on the population served by a particular dealership, and he was unsure exactly what the details were going to be, but thought maybe 10, at least a minimum would be 10. So, but they are supposed to work with the communities to find out where they would have most impact.
Great. That's great. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I just have one quick question. I love the idea of community gardens. I know in my neighborhood, everyone has a garden on our small plots, and so to have a community garden concept would be great, but I would be interested in the price range to rent those out on an annual basis. What are we looking at?
Yeah, so looking at the surrounding cities, price ranges from around $45 to $55 a plot, and that is for the whole season, with discounted rates for residents, typically $10 lower than the standard fee. So we would be looking for somewhere around that price range to keep consistent with the communities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In furtherance of Dr. Massey's query regarding that property on Rennislar, I did go by. I did photograph it. It is a vacant lot. It is right next to the house that was built very quickly. My understanding, and this would have to be investigated, is that the city is pursuing selling that lot at this point. So if that's going to be one of the lots or locations in contention, we'd have to do something to prevent the sale of it in order to consider that. But it is a vacant lot. It's in the middle of a subdivision. It's a nice lot in a nice subdivision. It's certainly large.
Yeah, I was just encouraged to talk, make sure you work with the city manager.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes. Yes.
Solar panel at the Hock. How many other cities have solar panels on their community centers?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm not quite sure. I know when I used to work for the City of Ferndale, though, we did a solar canopy carport for a police station, so definitely the City of Ferndale. I don't know if Royal Oak, in their renovations, did solar on top of their city hall, but I know that there were discussions about it, at least in the design, to make sure it be solar-ready. Otherwise, I would have to do a little bit of research to see further.
So we're all cutting edge. That's good. Like that.
Yeah.
Well, our city hall has solar panels.
I know.
Any other questions?
I have a few. Years ago, and I do mean years, we did use, we had community gardens when Dave Boyer was the head of Park and Rec. We had community gardens at the Hock, I mean, at Heritage Park, close to Argonne Street, as it so happens, and that went very well. And I don't know, I'm assuming the plumbing is still there if we wanted to expand the access, if we don't have any major plans for that part of the land there, but that was a hugely successful program, hugely, so I'm glad to see that here. With the new bill that was passed and signed by the president this weekend, there's a lot of money in there for solar panel credits and solar energy credits and battery credits. I would like to see us do something that's also geared toward helping our residents, and I don't know if part of that would be for Tesla solar shingles as well, but if the commission is interested in working on what we can drag together real quickly in terms of information, there will be a lot of people that will want to see if they can upgrade to a power wall and solar panels, and we need to probably fix our ordinances in neighborhoods to allow for either solar panels on roofs or maybe in freestanding areas of their backyard. I don't know how we want to go and how large the lot needs to be, but certainly that's one of the auditing features that you were talking about for our ordinances and for community review, and we may have to drag in homeowners' associations to get them to buy into this, because a lot of them will vociferously enforce their laws over what makes sense currently for sustainability. So I'd like to see us look at that, and I'm really pleased with the way this looks and where you're going and what you highlighted to begin with. Do you want to cover some other interesting stuff later on? One of the things I, and it has nothing to do with this, but it's a Park and Rec thing, and I'll bring it up during council members' announcements and comments, but I just wanted to congratulate you on your first gangbuster presentation to us, and I know you left a lot of... And I know you left a lot of stuff on the sidelines, because I can just see that Matt wants to keep on going. And I wanted to thank you for, for looking into those things. And if we can have more than one community garden, I'm all for it if we have the infrastructure still at Heritage Park, and I think we do, to maybe look at that and then maybe get some Boy Scout troops and some new Eagle Scouts who might be interested in building those raised beds for us and seeing what we can do to get them some lumber and other supplies, so.
Yeah, speaking of Eagle Scouts, actually, Mr. Massey spoke at my Eagle Scout ceremony for Troop 110 many, many years ago, so we can definitely
Oh, you're still a child. Didn't mean that meanly. I just, I meant that very fondly, because I'm not. So, yeah, so that's, and our Eagle Scouts are doing some, some great stuff in the community to help us out, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Actually, some of the cares at the cares gardens, some of the raised beds were done as part of a community service project.
Yeah, and I know that Warner has a a committee on recycling and environmental sustainability, and they might want to participate. Have some of the high school kids participate in helping us out, too. Give them some credit for it. That would be great. That's all I have, and I just wanted to thank you again, all of you, for your assistance and your willingness to brave this new world of science fiction coming alive for us. So thank you very, very much.
We want to thank you, too, and we look forward to so many new ideas and bring them forward to you. Thank you.
That's really exciting, terribly exciting. If we're not applauding... No, 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 no? Okay, save that for later. Anyway, thank you. We are all smiling in our hearts for you, so thank you all very, very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence that we all didn't receive?
Well, I, no correspondence, but I did have a, a telephone call from a Jimmy Brown who lives on Green Willow. And she inquired about the ability to no longer put her tax payments in the side of the building, that there's a new spot now that's in front of the police department. And she asked why she could no longer drop her tax payments in, in the slot that's really now for election materials only. What was the rationale behind that move?
May I?
Yes, you may.
Great. We're trying to keep that separate, because it looks as though there's some legislation that could be passed that only election material can go in election drop boxes. So out at the drive-up area, you notice that we have them completely separate now. So just in preparation, trying to get everybody used to that process now, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Can they still drive up and through the window, put their?
Yep.
Okay, so it's a window drop.
Yep, Treasury has their own silver box. It's completely separate from ours and looks very different.
Okay, so people just don't have to, if they're, if they're infirm or have some other disability, they don't have to physically get out of their car in order to drop off their taxes? Okay. And where is that located?
Right by the police department?
Oh, okay, that's the silver box.
Yes, yes.
But it's not attached to the building, though.
No, it's not. Nope, it's a drive-up box.
I guess she has some, you know, an elderly person has concerns about the safety of her, her check in that spot. In front of the police department, it can't get any safer than that.
Yep, and we have cameras on them, too, so.
Yeah. Maybe sometimes people get afraid that it's gonna sink to the bottom and get stuck in a corner of the box or something and not get out in time. Okay. Don't laugh, I've had people call me and tell me and insist that they put their taxes in and that we needed to fix their arrearses. Yes, I was told I was way too gullible at the time. So, next item is Consent Agenda. And Consent Agenda, all items listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the Consent Agenda for consideration. I will now turn it over to Mayor Protem Mary Newlin to read the Consent Agenda as published.
Thank you, Mayor Barnett. The Consent Agenda is published this evening. Number four, recommend approval of a concession agreement with rejuvenation fitness for the Farmington Hills Ice Arena. This is CMR 82271. Number five, recommend approval to advance plans for an innovation and economic development incubator at the Hawk. This is CMR 82272. Number six, recommend approval of the collective bargaining agreement with Command Officers Association of Michigan, also known as COAM. This is CMR 82273. Number seven, recommend approval of the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers Association of Michigan, otherwise known as POAM. This is CMR 82274. Number eight, recommend approval of the collective bargaining agreement with the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. This is dispatch. This is CMR 82275. Number nine, recommend approval of request for unemployment under Section 10.018 of the City Charter for a Hawk Concession Stand Attendant. Number 10, recommend approval of the City Council Study Session Meeting Minutes of July 25, 2022. And number 11, recommend approval of the City Council Regular Session Meeting Minutes of July 25, 2022.
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Yes, Mayor, I, I move that council approved consent item number four through nine, as read by Mayor Protem Newlin.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges and seconded by Councilmember Bolaware. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Noel.
Well, yes, because I was actually going to make a motion that we vote separately on items six through eight. But a motion is already now on the table.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I would like to try to amend the motion. And I would like to make a motion that we approves items four and five in one motion. Another approval be items six through eight, which is the collective bargaining agreements. And then...
May I rephrase this?
Yeah.
Under the current motion that's on the floor, you would like to amend it to remove items six, seven, and eight in the prior motion.
Yeah, that's correct. So now we have items about four, five, and nine in one?
Yes.
Four, five, and nine.
Okay, there's been a, a motion for an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment?
Support.
Okay, that, that amendment has been supported. We're gonna be voting on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, so that carries six to one. And now we are back to the main motion, which now contains the amendment, where we'll be voting on items number four, five, and nine. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, we need a motion for the other pieces of the Consent Agenda.
For, I can't do it.
Somebody confused?
The amendment, does that have to be roll call?
I think those would be roll call votes.
Oh, yes, they have to be roll call votes?
Yes.
The roll call on the amended mo, the vote, not on the motion to amend, that can be by voice.
Okay, okay, so, on, on the new main motion,
Yes.
which is to approve items four, five, and nine, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newlin?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bolaware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we need another motion. Dr. Bruce?
Mayor, I would move the approval of Consent Agenda items six, seven, and eight.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Bolaware. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Noel?
Yeah. So, I, I, I just want to state in advance that I will be voting no on items six, seven, and eight. And I just want the public to know, this is no way a reflection on my support for the police. Over all my years here on council, I have supported funding, training funding, uniform funding. I, for the police and fire, I have supported them in, in collective bargaining agreements before. And I believe what they, they do is remarkable. They put their lives in harm's way, and not many of us would dare do that. I have the utmost respect for our police and fire. And so this is in no way a reflection on that, but with this contract, we will be expanding a defined benefit system. And in order for a defined benefit system to be expanded within this city, in order for it to work, it will need to be expanded to the entire city, not just the police. I realize we already have police officers in a defined benefit system. But in order for the financials of this to actually make any sense, it has to be expanded to the entire city. And I, I can't support that. I'm not sure, I just don't believe it's, I think it's too risky to do that, to move the city back into a defined benefit system. We moved the city employees out of it quite a few years ago for financial reasons and to eliminate risk for the city. And I just am not convinced yet that we are able to, that by doing this, we are not setting ourselves up for problems in 20 years. It may look rosy for the next five, 10 years, but it's, I believe there is more risk with a defined benefit system. As you know, it's not just corporations, but numerous other cities throughout the state and other states have gotten out of defined benefits and gone to defined contribution systems or 401K systems. And so I am just uncomfortable moving back into this and expanding it for the police department, but for the entire, the entire employee base at large, because that's the only way this can work, is if it includes everyone. So for that reason, I will be voting no.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, I, I want to first want to say, I've worked with Councilmember Noel for nine years now, 2013. And, you know, I have a lot of respect for your viewpoints. Sometime we don't, often sometime we don't agree on a lot of different things, no question about that. But you've been very consistent regarding the isco, issue of fiscal responsibility and, and that issue. And you always talked about that particular point, and I like the fact that you're being consistent in your approach today on this particular topic. I have, I have misgivings or concerns about it as well, because I am not a, I don't have a crystal ball, nor do one of his council have a crystal ball. And currently, the city's in good fis, fiscal health, no question about that. But I'll be off this council in three years or and moving on. But the point is that I'm concerned about the city's long-term fiscal help as well. And at the same time, we do have some inequities within the police retirement system. We have a two-tiered system, where some are getting defined contributions, some are getting defined benefit. And that's a problem, and no question about that. And so this particular proposal will, will equalize that, will make everything fair, everybody getting, we're on the same program, retirement program. But it could also, I, I do not, I do not support a proposal coming to council that will give all employees of city of Farmington Hills, city employees, a pension. Because I, with Councilmember Noel's comment, I am equally concerned about this particular point going forward. Can we afford this? And do we want to leave this type of legacy with our residents in our community? So I have some concerns about the, the agreement as well. I'm going to reluctantly support it, but same time with a caution that I will not be supportive of any type of general, broad change in our retirement system for all employees. I think this remedy tonight will help, again, solve a problem that is there. We have a two-tiered system. But it ends there in regards to my support for defined benefits for other city employees. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I'm gonna finally weigh in. I believe that we have made, in public administration, a terrible mistake by painting all public employees with a broad brush saying that we don't have the money and we can't afford a defined benefit plan for a portion of their retirement. This is a portion of their retirement, not their whole retirement. There still is a 401K that, or 403B that they can contribute to, a 457 plan that they can contribute to. But the day we decided to eliminate defined benefit plans from our market basket of goods and services that we can offer and entice employees into the public sector, we ended up with shortages of schoolteachers, massive shortages of firefighters, massive shortages of police officers who don't want to work in city government. We bring in employees to serve in other parts of our departments, and they leave for greener pastures as soon as possible when they get an offer that contains a higher benefit package than we can offer here. And with all of the training that we provide, the stability that we try to provide our residents, we are doing them a disservice by not trying to recruit and provide the best of all possible worlds for our employees. This is paid for, just like we had a fully funded pension plan prior to the Great Recession. We had a funded pension plan after the Great Recession. Yet some throughout the state decided it was, why waste a good economic crisis when you don't have to? And so we cut off our nose to spite our face. And that's why we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough firefighters, we don't have enough police officers, we don't have enough state troopers, we don't have enough engineers in private, in the public sector. And I could go on and on about where people are going instead of working for local governments. And it's a talent loss for all of us. And we are at a critical approach where we have two-tiered systems, which in my mind is unequal pay for equal work. And I find that an anathema, especially as a woman, where we have been fighting for our 100 cents on the dollar. For African-American and minority women who have been fighting for their 100 cents on the dollar instead of the 53 cents that they get. And I think that this will draw new employees in, will give them the courage to stay, and enticement to stay, to get trained, to fully be a part of this community. And this is being offset by other changes in retiree healthcare, which is lowering our cost in the future, and by a withdrawal charge for getting out of the other parts of your pension, of, of your 403B and your 457 plan that will hold those plans harmless in the future by adding a cost to leave the plan and fully withdraw. I think this plan makes sense for us. It makes sense for every community across the state of Michigan, and indeed for every school district across the state of Michigan. And I will be supporting this for all of our employees who dedicate their time and energy and, and efforts to make sure that this is the best city to not only live in, but to work in and to serve. And I think this is a great move forward, and I am very excited to see that these plans have been ratified by the appropriate unions, and I can't wait to cast my vote yes. So, with that, any further comments? Nope, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Massey?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
Bolaware?
Yes.
Okay, now we need part three.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that items 10 and 11 would be approved as read by the Mayor Protem.
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Noel, to get the third part of the Consent Agenda done. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
Bolaware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. And that brings us to public questions and comments. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes on any item that is currently not on the agenda. And I have two blue slips, you didn't have to fill them out, guys, but you did. So, Silver Fox? Oh, you're going up for all of you?
Pam Gerald?
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening to council, to the mayor, and to everyone in the room that decided to come out and be a part of the process. I came here maybe about a meeting or two ago to talk about an incident that just really disturbed me. And after that meeting, I had a candid conversation with someone out in the hallway. And I expressed my concern about the Boy Scouts coming in and looking at these target sheets that were African-American. Well, I had to go back and think of all the years that I had gone to the range, and I never even noticed the color of any of the target practices. So in that conversation, I said that if it was an issue, instead of getting a civil rights lawyer and going to the media, the ideal approach would have been to contact the chief of police first and then see what the conversation was like. But everybody doesn't think like me. So in 2020, in the former city that I lived in, which is the city of Southfield, and I still have a home there, so I pay taxes in this city and in the city of Southfield, we started a citizens advisory board. And we got an opportunity to go down and shoot on the police range. And I just happened to find my sheet. Never noticed the ethnicity. But I looked at this sheet here, if all of council can see it. And I said, what nationality is this guy? Now, to me, he could be Puerto Ricanian. He could be from Dominica. Or he could be Italian, just looking at the dark hair and the mustache. Now, I have a niece that's biracial. She's black and Puerto Ricanian. How do you think my Puerto Rican relatives would feel that this person that looks like this is on the target sheet? How would my Colombian and Dominican friends feel to look at this person on the target sheet? I said it before. And by the way, you can see I'm a really good shot. All these are center masks. And I'll say it again, and I'll keep on saying it. You know, there is a thing called discrimination. There is unequal equity. And we need to fight hard for greater inclusion, diversity, equity, and all of those things. But what I don't want to see happen is for a person, or an entity, or an organization to take a small thing and try to turn it into something that it's not. In every municipality, there's a proper chain of command that if something happens and you don't like it, you go to the appropriate people. When all else fails, you can take the matter to mediation. Then you try to get a lawyer and do a press conference, because at least you tried. But for that to be the first course of action, I'm disappointed. Let's not take away the real discrimination that happens with these events that the young people are calling cancel culture or something to that effect. We have a really good police department in this city. I had to learn a lot of why they do certain things. And I got that experience going through the Southfield Citizens Academy, which my husband and I are now on the police chiefs advisory board. And I think once you learn why they do certain things, you'll have a change of heart. Is it to say we don't have bad cops in the United States? We do. But we have a larger percentage of good cops that take their oath to protect and serve seriously. You've heard me say, a community is only as strong as its public safety and the relationship that that public safety has with the constituents, the taxpayers in that city. And I think it's good. And anything that isn't good, it's a learning process. But you don't involve the media in the learning process, because that's just what it is. Learn, process, listen, and try to come together. I'm still upset. I'm happy with the progress in this city. And I know and I can see that they're moving forward to reach out to the residents. And I'm going to be against anybody that tries to turn that situation into something that I don't believe it was. And if I thought, because I have been on the battlefield fighting racism and discrimination, and I have a proven track record, if I thought for one second that it was discrimination, I would have been out there. And I would have called a press conference, because I have a relationship with the media. And they know I don't do it for me. I don't go get my hair and nails done before the press conference. I'm out there. So that's all I have to say. If you got a problem, go to the appropriate authorities. Try to work it out before you do all of that. And every time I hear this on the radio, them talking about this situation, I'm going to keep coming here, showing my sheet and talking about it. So I don't know, do I want to be offended that he looks like my niece's family? I don't know. Maybe I should call my niece and my other Puerto Rican relatives and ask them, does this offend them? Thank you.
I think you've done a great job tonight. Thank you very much for your support for our hard-working officers and for your participation in all of the advisory boards that you serve on. It's great to see you. Anyone else? Yes, just come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matt Strickfaden. I live on Brittany Drive in Farmington Hills. I wanted to give an update to the issue that I brought in front of council at the last meeting, where council members were so generous with their time and consideration. Mrs. Moat, a neighbor down the street who's very elderly, has a low spot in her backyard that's actually on Heritage Park that floods constantly, her septic field and all the way up into her lower level of her house, going on for years and years and years. There really hasn't been any type of movement towards any remedy for Mrs. Moat and of varying degrees from Oakland County and past administrations on why they couldn't and wouldn't do anything. So I came in front of council and proposed a solution that I thought was elegant, simple, and effective. I was mean to Gary Mekchen. I shouldn't have been. I didn't give him time to do the work that he said he would do, because I never have patience, as everybody on council knows, especially Vicki Barnett. But I am so delighted to be here today to tell you that 8:30 the following morning, Tim through Gary said that the city would pick up the very small cost for the materials, which was wonderful. It was more of a principal issue, but Gary made that happen. Miranda Alexander through in engineering was wonderful in her efforts to try to make this happen. And Fred Merrim from FDM Contracting, who's been putting in the water supply system for our subdivision, sent five guys a piece of equipment, which is a ditch witch, for two days. And by end of day on Wednesday, this is just two days after the council meeting, the project was completely finished. Just in time for two days later, torrential rains to prove that, in fact, the system works. There was no flooding of the pond, no flooding of her yard, no flooding of her basement. And I am here to tell you how much I appreciate council, mayor, and Gary, your efforts to take care of this on behalf of my neighbor, who really appreciates it also. So thank you all very much for what you've done. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That was wonderful. I'm glad. That is, that's terrific. Okay, anybody else?
Good evening, honorable body, mayor, council, clerk, everyone else. I'm Dr. Wendy Webster Jackson. I am candidate for 18th District, Michigan State House of Representatives. I am coming, I'm coming here today because I wanted to see about the follow-up. I go around and I do almost, forgive my intern, he's very tired today. So my political intern is tired. Okay, I went, I do, I asked several residents around Farmington Hills and Farmington to see certain issues that they may have. And one of the things I'm continuously seeing is that the water bill, I know two meeting, last meeting that you said you were going to talk with the Great Lakes Water Authority to see if anything could be done, because the sewer witch, sewage part of the bill is being exorbitant and is causing a lot of people with fixed incomes to have a strain upon their budget. So I'm here today just to see. I've gotten about 10 names. They did not want to disclose their names or addresses, but I spoke to 10 residents of the cities. And they said the water bill, has anything been done? Have you, were able to talk to the Great Lakes Water Authority? So I can take something back to say, I know, I said they're working on it. They said they're going to do it, but I wanted to come today to follow up.
You remind me a lot of one of our great city council members, mayor and state representative Aldo Bagnosi, who every time he would go door-to-door, would come in front of city council with a whole list. So I do not believe we've had time to address the Great Lakes Water Authority. They've had some major problems in the last week and a half. So I think that we'll be dealing with this. Do you know when, Mr. Mekchen?
We're trying to have Oakland County attend a study session coming up here in the fall. That's the earliest that we could bring somebody, a representative, in that was available. But if you have a list of folks that have a concern, we certainly, if you're willing to share that, we're certainly happy to take that information from you. Joe Valentine, my assistant, can get that information from you. And just along those, along those same lines, the resident that was here, I think the last meeting in July, we've reached out to him on several occasions to try to pass along information and financial assistance. And we're trying to work with that resident as best as we can.
We're not going to let this drop. Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Bolware?
Yes. You know, the person who we're speaking about, I think his name is Dixon Tyson. And I think most of us, all of us on council, had a very emotional response to that gut-wrenching situation that he expressed. So I did reach out to our drain commissioner. And he asked that we, there's a program that's called the WRAP program that may be able to assist this person, up to 60%. And he asked Gary that we send his name and his contact information over to him, and he will contact that person personally and see what they could do to get him in the WRAP program that's by the Water Resources Authority. But there's nothing that the county has that could help him. And as we mentioned, there's nothing that Farmington Hills has. But the WRAP program is intended to assist individuals who are, you know, 200% or more above the poverty line. So I guess we could also take, if you have names as well and contact information, you can give that to Joe Valentine. When we send the list to him, then we could send all those names. We could reach out to them.
Okay, Madam Jackie, so you said the WRAP, W-R-A-P?
Mm-hmm.
That's similar to what's in Wayne County that they have?
Yes.
So it is available to residents, residents here?
This is where our drain commissioner, Jim Nash, informed me.
Okay.
I reached out to him, because that story was just heart-wrenching to me. And so there is a program that might be available for him.
Okay, and it's not just here. It's everywhere. Because I always, I do it to eat for each city, Lathrop, Southfield, Oak Park. That's a similar thing, is that the water bill has just become exorbitant. It's hard for them to afford it.
I think this was just, for this person, it was sewage, because he didn't have water.
Well, sewage, yes. But the part of it together.
Matt, doing a terrific job there.
Grandfather here, okay. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Matt, you're going to business, Matt.
Uncle Matt's very happy. Anyone else during public comments? And, yes?
T.R. Carr, I'm chairman of the Economic Development Corporation Board for the city of Farmington Hills. And I just want to extend our appreciation for the support for the innovation center that's under development at the HAWK. I do, just to let you know, and I'm sure most of you are aware, that the state of Michigan has agreed to provide significant funding to move that process forward, thanks to work of Representative Steckloff. We do appreciate that. At the same time, our goal in the Economic Corporation Board is to see real growth in the city of Farmington Hills across the city, because we know that we have to run hard just to stay still. So as we move forward with the Innovation Center, we're looking at a variety of other efforts, working with city staff, working with various departments to move this city forward, as well as working with the city council. So again, this has been a three-year process. Sometimes we thought it would never end. But at the same time, we've had a number of corporations wanting to take tours of the third floor, looking at the third floor. We have another one coming up in the not-too-distant future. We have not marketed this with a marketing campaign, but the word is out that this is an opportunity for businesses to start up in our city. Tradition indicates that these startups will relocate within five to 10 miles of their, of their initial site. So again, we thank you for the confidence you've had in us. And we'll work together to move the city of Farmington Hills forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been informed that the $750,000 appropriation is on page 114 of the Treasury Budget.
All right, we'll underline that in red and keep that in mind.
We want it in black ink.
That's it. All right, thank you.
Coming our way. Yeah, so, yeah, so the representative kindly called me and said, one page, page 114 of the Treasury Budget. So she's very supportive of this project. And as I said, so is the governor. And the governor is making this a pilot program and has asked the legislature to appropriate, which they did, a large sum of money for a revolving fund for other projects similar to this in other communities. So that's great. Anybody else for public question and comment? Seeing no one, public question and comment is closed. And we'll now go back to council members' comments and announcements. Dr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of doing a ride-along with our wonderful police department. But I've had the opportunity to do two or three of these over the last few years. And one of the things that is really very cool about doing a ride-along with the police is you get to see how they actually act in a lot of different situations. And it's not about arrests or car chases or anything like that. It's really about every time acts of great kindness to our citizens and how they're able to help a lot of different situations. So during the last time I did the ride-along, just a couple of weeks ago, we helped a homeless, transported a homeless person who was stranded at the blood plasma place closer to their home in Detroit. We, he, the officer, helped mediate a landlord-tenant dispute during an eviction process and calm the situation down, helped rescue a woman who had a medical issue in her home and got help there for her. So it's really very nice to see those, those interactions and the professionalism of our department. And again, it's just the overall kindness that they show to the citizens. But one of the things that I brought up with our city manager and our city attorney was, as my wife will tell you, I'm very much a klutz, and I've broken probably more bones than I actually have. So I asked them about, what if something were to happen during the ride-along where there's an injury? So you get T-boned, you fall out of the car, something happens. And, you know, would we be covered for something like that? Because I know a lot of us do ride-alongs, either with the police or fire or DPW even, a lot of different departments. And I think the final decision was probably, but not 100%, which, I'm not talking about the money, the salary portion of our job, that's not significant. What I'm talking about is medical coverage, in case one of us were to get hurt on doing these.
Oh, your salary doesn't cover that, yeah?
Right, exactly. So I said, you know, maybe that's something that we should know more about, because to be honest, if we don't get coverage for that kind of thing, that might influence me doing something like that again with another department, you know, because then we'd be on our own and not be covered by that, really in our role as a city council member, working on our job as a council member, to really kind of see how things in the city are working. And I think that's very important to do. So I think we were talking about if we wanted to push that. were talking about if we wanted to push that a little bit further and get more of an actual determination, that might take something from council to direct our city attorney to look into further. And I think that might be an important thing to do, because I don't think any of us would want to be hurt on one of these things and then find out that we don't have coverage after the fact.
Good point.
So maybe if our city attorney, Mayor, if that would be appropriate for him to kind of.
Yes.
He can't wait to get started.
Well, actually, what probably would need to happen is, as I explained to Council Member Bruce, not a workers' comp lawyer sitting here right in front of you. And, and we don't really handle the employment law work. Another law firm, Mr. Fleury's Law Firm, he handles the employment law, and they do do workers' comp. So what I could do is consult with that firm, the city's other firm for employment law matters, and send you a note back, either he or somebody from his office, or I will follow up and fill you in if you want me to. I mean, you don't need a formal motion unless this is something everybody's interested in, or more of you plan on doing rides, it is a valid question, I think. And I can get you information on that.
Okay, make it so.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other council member comments and announcements? Councilmember Knoll, and then Dr. Massey?
Sure, I have two items. One of them, we have our Economic Development Corporation team member here. So I'd like to make a suggestion, and that is, is that our EDC, Economic Development Corporation, our Economic Development Director, meet with the City of Farmington with their DDA Director and their Economic Development Director. And basically, just see how we can work together, how we can coordinate on the southeast end of Farmington. I'm often in the southeast end of Farmington, I'm sure we all are, but there, there are some tired areas that just need some, not just sprucing up, but some economic, more economic development activity. And because we share a border with Farmington there, I think it's imperative that we really have a strategy that works for both, both communities, and we work with them and collaborate efforts, so we're not, you know, running in circles or trampling on each other. So I just thought it would be something maybe you could put on your agenda, and see how we can do that. And then the other item I have that I'd like added to a study session is, and that has to do with short-term rentals. I know, we've talked about this a bit in study session, and I know the city manager is checking in with the Michigan Municipal League regarding ordinances and legislation on this issue. But it, it sounds incomprehensible that people would actually try to rent their house for an hour for parties.
Pool.
Pool, house, whatever, yard, whatever. But, but the point is, is we have lovely, we have many, you know, people move to Farmington Hills to have a peaceful neighborhood. And we, obviously, everyone loves to have a good party, there's nothing wrong with that, but no one moves to Farmington Hills and wants to have the neighbor next to them that's having constant parties all day long, one right after another, playing loud music, and cars up and down the driveway. It doesn't promote the peaceful, tranquil lifestyle that many people move to the suburban community for. So, you know, I'm sorry, but nothing good happens at one-hour parties, whether they're renting rooms in the house or whether they're renting a pool. So I'd like to discuss that at a study session. And I know our police are working on the situation that's going on right now. So, but I think we need to be more proactive in the future on this one.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just to piggyback on that, at one point, MML was fighting legislation that would ban communities from prohibiting short-term rentals.
Well, that was for Airbnbs and so forth.
Right, would that be included in something like that?
That's what the city manager is looking into, but nothing's passed yet anyway. So, I mean, at this point, as far as I understand, we're still free to do what we want to when it comes to, we have local control over that issue.
Okay, great.
But the city manager's checking into it.
Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just thinking about pool rentals for an hour. Does that have to come with clean water when you rent it the next time? I don't know. Anyway, two, two items from me, one on a serious note and one on a not-so-serious note. The serious note is to, Mr. Bridges sustained a loss in his family, and I wanted to express my condolences, and I think all of council joins me in that. And I know it's hard on your family, but Mike, we're sorry to have learned of your loss.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mayor.
And secondly, on the less serious note, because for the last two or three meetings during my comments, I keep bringing up the mental health work at SAFE does, and how it's funded by a fundraiser, and we were going to have a fun SAFE, pardon the use of the word and the acronym at the same time, but softball tournament that raises money and awareness for mental health. And that was held last Saturday. And I know Councilwoman Newland, Councilwoman Knoll did stop, have a chance to stop by, but a number of us played, there were eight or nine teams that went out and played. It was a great event. And I just wanted to let council know that Police Department Two, the PD, put in two teams this year, and Farmington Hills PD, Team Number Two, did win the tournament. And it was well, it was well-played. And our assistant city manager put himself in the game, and he didn't come out too sore. So, all great. The next one is easy to plan for, it's the first Saturday in August, and we reserved the fields, we're going to be doing this for the next, well, we still had two years left, and we extended it for five more on that. So for the next seven years, first Saturday in August, please come out and join us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
First, I wanted to say, Councilmember Massey, were you a player or were you the coach? What was your role there?
What was my role there?
Your role?
So I, well, being the organizer, I get to have the excuse of I've got to organize things, but I was on a team this year.
You were on a team?
And I did play. And
Swing the bat.
One game, I
Did you swing the bat?
Played second. And on one, and you can ask the assistant city manager, Mr. Valentine, as I threw the ball well past him, over his head, because it was a little rusty. And then in the second game, I, I was catcher. And I will tell you, it takes, I'm a little older than I used to be, and so it takes a day or two to get your quads to loosen back up after you do that.
Squats. All right. First, I want to also say that Councilmember Massey, he's always been showing just, I don't know what word is deference, or just basically levels of sensitivity regards to, I've had a couple of losses in my family, and you've always reached out and tell me, give me good thoughts. I appreciate that, thank you for that. Also wanted to just to thank the city council members who also sent me text messages, words of condolences as well. City Manager of Mekchen, very nice card, appreciate that, thank you for that as well. I think those are my comments I wanted to add. I think I had something else in my brain, but I could not, cannot, I haven't seen your moment, a little senior moment. Well, those are my comments. I just wanted to make those comments there that I appreciate, it's tough, you know, to lose a brother like that, you know, suddenly, but, you know, life is always curveballs and, and, but I don't want to go religious, but I'm in, I'm in good stead. I'm all right, I'm all right. It's tough.
You've had it tough this summer, your mother and.
Mother last year, this time last year, and now my brother this time this, this year as well. Yeah, it's tough.
Councilmember Bolware?
Yes. Earlier during council session, we heard from the Innovation Committee, and they mentioned community gardens. And from that discussion, I think someone, either Val or Ken, mentioned getting the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts to make raised beds, which brought me to our new Maker Space at the HAWK. We have this fantastic tool, I don't know, I don't know the proper word for all these saws and miters and all the stuff for woodworking. We had an open house there Saturday from noon to four, that was very well-attended. There's so much equipment, other than the woodworking shop, there's embroidery machines and sergers and sewing machines and 3D printers and so much, so many items that are so sophisticated that are beyond my ability to operate without going to a class. And there are several classes that they're offering to learn how to use all that equipment. And a lot, my thanks goes out to Bosch for helping us get the Maker Space up and ready, ready. I think there's going to be a special something in September for the community, the Maker Space. And people often ask me, what is a Maker Space? And the best, as I can explain, is it's a place where creative people get together, work in the community on their projects. There are storage facilities there, the cost is very reasonable. You can have monthly passes, annual passes, day passes, you know, for seniors, residents. And so I would encourage everyone to stop by, take a look at it, and to look at that equipment. It's such a great space for those who are interested in any of the woodworking or any type of sewing crafts, whatever that you may do. And I think for me, as trying to learn quilting, they have this long-arm quilter that I don't think you can find anywhere other than paying for, to have that service done at a very expensive cost. And we have it right here in our city at the Great HAWK, our community center.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I have, well, let me start with one thing. There was an election on August 2nd, and we will have an election for state senate for two-thirds of Farmington Hills, all of Farmington, two-thirds of Livonia, all of Redford Township, and parts of northwest Detroit. Unfortunately, I did not prevail, but a very kind young woman named Mary Kavanaugh did, and she will be running against her opponent, Ken Kreider. I just wanted to congratulate Mary and wish her all the best in her run, which is what I did before I took off on my vacation. And on my vacation, to my favorite happy place in the world, Quebec, we were at our condo in the Laurentian Mountains, and there was a new thing, a new activity called the Tonga Lumina. And it is a night walk adventure, about one and a half kilometer trail with a story behind it, and all these sensory lights and different things that one can discover along the way. It's not as cheap as I hope we will make it in Farmington Hills, but I just wanted to bring that to our attention, because we have this beautiful heritage park with the appropriate trails necessary. I'll pass all this on to you, Mr. Farmer, later. And it would be just a wonderful experience to bring to the residents of Farmington Hills, probably in the spring and the fall, because it, it's, you don't want to do it too late and you need dark. So you don't want to be traipsing around there starting at 10 o'clock at night until 11. So, but we can talk about that. And then there was another very interesting thing in Quebec City, and it was over the water, and I know we don't have a lot of water here. But on a regional basis, Quebec City has a firework festival. So during the summer, during July and August, every Thursday night and every Sunday night, different companies are invited to compete for the best of the fireworks show. And I don't know what the prize is, but I'm assuming it's substantial, because the fireworks we saw on Thursday night were unbelievable. And so every Thursday and every Sunday, there's a different company or set of companies that do these elaborate fireworks displays. And it would be great to find someplace in Oakland County to have an Oakland County-wide firework display competition. And I don't know how we get all that done, but certainly I can put my husband, who speaks French, on the phone with the Quebec City folks and find out what it is all about. But it was just spectacular. And I guess I'm dreaming big, and I know we're getting ready for our 50th anniversary here in 2023, but I just wanted to point that out. And, and to all of my council members, I want to thank you all for your, your kind words on the 3rd of August. And you guys were great. I had a wonderful time running for office, I always do. And this was a great final hurrah. It was just, I met a lot of wonderful people. And I recommend that everybody run for office at least once in their lives. I mean, John knows, I mean, you don't always win, but you never lose, because you've always won something along the way. And it's, it's just, it's a great experiment in being in a living democracy like the United States, and it just, it's terrific. So that's all I have to say, but I missed you all terribly for two weeks. No, I didn't, I really had a nice time. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, good evening, council. So cannabis. We would like to schedule the Cannabis Public Outreach Meeting sometime in October. So at next week's city council meeting, please come prepared with a couple of days that we can land on to have those sessions. I think city attorney and I and a couple of other staff members met to discuss this, and we believe that the intent of, of these meetings were to have informal workshops, perhaps one in the evening and one during the daytime to kind of get different demographics to show up, to at least have input in that process. And so be prepared, hopefully, to bring some dates forward. I'm currently working on phase two. If you remember, there are three phases. First phase was to get industry input, we've done that. Second phase is for city manager's office to collect information from municipalities. We're, we're currently in the process of that. I talked to, we've talked to two communities, and by the end of the week, we should have the rest of the communities that I mentioned in my weekly memo to council completed. If there is a, another community that you'd like to, like me to reach out and have a conversation with their folks, feel free to give me a call, happy to do that. So just be prepared for that. And, and we can't schedule, according to our process, we're not supposed to schedule these meetings until completion of both phase one and phase two. And then we got a 30-day notice for those public meetings as, as part of the process. So just want to have council prepared for next week. Yes, we do have a meeting next week, as we did back-to-backs this month. And also to let the public know that we're moving forward with our investigative process. 14 Mile Road Project from Orchard Lake, from, from Farmington to Orchard Lake Road is progressing nicely. We have, hopefully, I'm having a hard time speaking. We're hopeful to have that open for traffic by the end of August. Hopefully, that's by Labor Day weekend, we will see. There is a new road construction project some of my council have made me aware of, more, more so than others. Here between 11 and 10 Mile, Orchard Lake Road is open southbound, but it is closed northbound about mid-block for a large culvert replacement. So wanted the public to know about that. Traffic control needs to be cleaned up a little bit, but that will be an ongoing project, I believe, through the fall. And if you want more information on that, you can certainly subscribe to our listserv and also friend our Facebook page, because we put, push out RCOC information, Road Commission for Oakland County, which that's the, that's the jurisdiction that project is under, and we try to push out as much information for their projects as well. City Open House is Saturday, October 8th, from noon to 3:00 PM here at the municipal complex. And councilperson Bolware brought up the Maker Space. We are having a Maker Space workshop ribbon cutting on Monday, September 12th, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the HAWK Community Center. Public is invited, and very much look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay. And before I go on to the next item, if my husband is listening, happy anniversary. It is our 41st anniversary today, and it's all going great, all going great. We had a great, great vacation, it was wonderful. Next item is new business, consideration of approval of appointment of voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting on October 19th, 2022 in Muskegon. So, who's going?
I'm going.
I'm going.
I'm going.
Okay. So the three of you are going? Well, since I'm doing the talking right now, I would suggest that somebody make a motion so that the mayor pro temp is the voting delegate, and then somebody and then somebody is the alternate delegate.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I would tender a motion to make, to ask Mary Newlin, our mayor pro tem, to be the voting member, and Dr. Bruce to be our alternate.
I thought we were friends.
Do you want to be alternate, or would you prefer Jackie?
I'll be alternate. Okay, I'll be, I'll be alternate.
Is that okay, Jackie?
Unless Jackie really wants it, you can have it.
No, I, no. I really don't want it.
I don't either. You notice, I haven't told you word one as to whether I'm going.
I think we have a purse of, a perfect selection between Mayor Pro Tem and Dr. Bruce, and I'd support that.
Okay, so it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, I mean, moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Bolware. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Good going, guys. And that brings us to...
Attorney report.
The attorney report. Any questions?
No questions.
Nope. Okay. Now we go to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment.
Move.
Move?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I figured that's how you were going to finish it. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges and seconded by Council Mayor Pro Tem Newlin. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Well, that brings us to the end of this evening. We will be convening again next Monday evening on the, what's the date next week?
22nd.
22nd of August. And so for this evening, this is the end of our regularly scheduled meeting for August 15th, 2022. Good night, Farmington Hills.